Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order and we don't have any alternates, so we don't have to worry about that. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, so I'd like to add the special meeting minutes of, let me see. Mary Kay, do you have the date there?
January twenty seven.
Thank you.
January twenty seven.
Yep.
So I'd like to add that under item eight point two.
All right, eight point two.
And then I don't have any other applications that came in, but I just have a couple of points of discussion that I'd like to add under new business as well. So under item six point two, I'd like to just update everyone on the concrete dock removal at one forty six Route eighty seven, which we approved this past season. I have a question about it essentially for the commission on how to best proceed. And then I'd also like to add item six point three, that drainage report, which was prepared for LMAC and emailed to everyone tonight. I have that to screen share as well.
Okay, very good. I'll do that, okay. Two items. And any communications or correspondence?
No, not tonight.
Okay. We don't have any audience of citizens, I guess. And let's go right into the new business then. Item six point one, application of Ron Mike to build a one car garage and move a driveway at twenty five Lake Road. Do you want to give us a little background on that?
Yes. So I'm just sharing my screen here so I can show everyone the map of the area. This is twenty five Lake Road is right behind twenty Lake Road where we had previously been for a wetlands violation. So you might be somewhat familiar with the area, but there are wetlands between the two properties right on this western side here. And it actually, there's a brook that you can see on the map that crosses right behind the property. And the drainage ultimately goes to the lake, which is just on the other side of Lake Road right there. The proposed addition, the house does not have a garage. The proposed addition is fairly close to the existing wetlands, but also to a quarry pond that was dug out. I'm not sure what they would ultimately like to do with that. I think that there are some changes that'll be made. And we're in the process now of sorting everything out with the nutrient allocation plan as well, which is a zoning requirement in addition to being a wetlands requirement. So I do have a meeting with the zoning enforcement officer tomorrow to go look at everything onsite and determine the best location for some infiltration. But it is, it will be fairly close to the existing wetlands. I would say probably within thirty feet. And I think that this is something the commission would probably like to see in person in a site walk. The applicant isn't available tonight. He was traveling, but he said he would be available for any site walk that the.
Okay, very good. So why don't we accept the application tonight and then we'll set up a site walk, okay?
Okay.
Right, I'll make a motion to accept the application.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All moved, okay, very good. Okay, and how about a Saturday for the site walk? Would the tenth at nine o'clock be okay with everybody?
Actually, I can't make this Saturday. I can do any other Saturday.
Okay, well, let's make it the seventeenth then.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody make?
So John, I won't be able to make it, but I can find time to swing by and take a look at it.
Okay, very good, perfect, okay, thanks Ian. Anybody else won't be able to be there or whatever? Okay, then we'll set it up for Saturday, nine AM. And that's on the seventeenth.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Well, the next item is old business, okay? Item seven point, oh wait, yeah, I'm sorry, we got six point two.
Yes.
Concrete removal at one forty six Route eighty seven.
Yes, so these are a couple of pictures. When we originally approved the application, let me see, it was this, this winter. I don't have the date right here in front of me. But the, the plan was to essentially bring the excavator out onto the dock and remove it, remove concrete piece by piece without bringing any heavy machinery onto the lake. This is the, the current condition of the area. There was some rubble that's remained that they were not able to, to fully remove with the excavator. And I have been approached by the homeowner and by landscaper that they would like to contract with. They'd like to get that removed while the lake is still drawn down, if that's possible. But they feel that it would be necessary to bring some type of machinery onto the lake bed. They do have matting, which is, they, I know in the past that the commission has allowed certain types of corduroy. I don't know if that's something that they have currently. I know they do have like plastic matting, which can essentially, it's used in forestry pretty frequently to cross wetlands without causing damage to the wetland itself by floating the machinery and any necessary material over the wetland itself so that it doesn't cause the same running that it typically would. And then that's removed following the end of work. I don't know where the commission stands on this because it's not something that I have seen be allowed in my time as wetlands agent. So I just wanted to get feedback from everybody. Is this something that commission members would be open to allowing on a limited basis for an application like this or in the future? What are your, your general thoughts on this type of work specifically?
Isabel, would, would there be a town represent, I mean, if they did bring in heavy machinery, were they saying how long it would take? Because I, I guess my fear with, with kind of giving a carte blanche approval on it is we then find out after the fact they either removed too much and we weren't there to see it kind of thing. And if they're doing a heavy machinery and looking at these piles, I can't imagine that it would take them more than a day.
Yeah, no, I think that that was the intent, they said, two days at the most.
Yeah, that's not bad.
And my only other comment is that plastic protection board, I can't remember what the name of it is called, but I, I know exactly what we're talking about. A lot of times, or that stuff is actually pretty costly and a lot of contractors tend to have two pieces of it that they say they're gonna move as the work progresses and then it never moves. That would be my concern with that thought processes, is it's just not, a lot of contractors don't do it as well as they thought they, or think they would.
Okay, Mary, is that you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I just hopped on. I'd like to make a clarification. Yeah, we had a good win tonight, okay, now we'll get to business. I'd like to make a clarification. I spoke with and did a site visit with Chris Wantey on Saturday. I sent you an email, but I think you may have missed it. Chris has changed his mind. He does not want to put heavy equipment on the lake. He just wants to, he wants to do it with human manpower. In other words, lift a rock and get it off, lift a rock and get it off. His reasoning is for two. Number one, the safety of the lake bed. And he's a little concerned as I'm starting to hear and as we all should be. Number two, he only has a limited time because the lake drawdown is going to start to come up eventually. So he wants to get on this like yesterday. LMAC had via email had a discussion about this in the subcommittee. And we approved this because it, under the permit, we're allowing the removal of the dock. And this is the foundation of the dock, which many of our old docks, once you take the concrete top off, the foundation's just rubble. So LMAC already approved it this morning as being within our permit. And we're not asking him to go with any other permit. So I think Chris's request would be that that IWWC or the wetlands agent would, would also have an administrative approval because we're allowing him to remove the dock and he's not going to do anything to harm the lake bed. He literally is gonna have, you know, a group of guys picking up rocks and putting him, taking that debris away because he just couldn't do it with machinery.
He must have some pretty strong guys.
Well, I met him and his father-in-law, I don't know who else is gonna do it.
Well, thank you for, thank you for adding that, Mary. I'm sorry, I must have missed your email. I, I think that it's up for the commission to vote on. If you'd like to, it doesn't sound inconsistent with the approval that if he were to bring heavy machinery onto the lake bed. It was a condition of the original approval that there be no heavy machinery on the lake bed. So that would constitute
Correct.
Change of the conditions. Without that provision, then it, this seems consistent with their initial application. And, and I'll reach out to Chris to make sure he's aware and give him feedback.
Thank you.
Since he's going to do everything with labor, I would like to get a motion to make this an administrative approval. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All moved.
Okay, so just for my own purposes, in the future, I noticed we do have a number of other concrete docks that will need work and, and a couple of other things. So I'd like to have an understanding still of the commission's level of comfort or any specific concerns with heavy machinery on the lake bed if it were a limited scope. Ian, I definitely hear what you're saying and I'd like to be able to have that in mind so I can advise any applicants in the future who are inquiring.
I, I can tell you historically it has happened and we've been very restrictive when it happens and very much inspecting to ensure the right corduroy or whatever it is we call it does not harm the lake bed. That's from LMAC's perspective, I'm just giving you that perspective.
Yeah.
Good to have.
I would think that then all of these things be made an administrative approval, you know, as long as they're very careful.
All right, I will, I'll touch base with Chris Want and let him know he's good to begin removing this material by hand.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, item six point three, the drainage report.
Yes, so this was forwarded to me again by Mary, thank you. I just, I sent this out to everyone via email today to share it with you all briefly because I know that LMAC will be discussing it this week as well. There's some background information in here, but essentially, as everyone's aware, we've had some very significant storm events. There are seven from December eleventh to January twenty eighth. A total precipitation of about seventeen and a half inches. And the ground has been consistently saturated. So Mary and I believe some other LMAC members possibly went around the lake and took pictures of the existing drainage. This here on the, the top left is Karen Lewis's property where we originally recently approved a lake wall repair. That's the swale that they had been discussing that's between her property and the Moran property. That's drainage coming off of Route eighty seven. It's been very, very heavy flows through there, very heavy flows through Sleepy Hollow Road and elsewhere around the lake. Let me see. And that's caused some very significant erosion. So LMAC's lake consultant, TRC, had recommended an inspection of major stormwater drains around the lake, which LMAC went around and completed. And they looked at several drains around the lake for their first flush. So here are some examples included in that report. And I know that three drainage areas, if this will continue, were found to be non-functional. Two are on Sleepy Hollow Road and one is at thirty six Erdoney. One of the ones on Sleepy Hollow is the right of way by Mr. Dobish, which is currently non-functional. It appears that a lot of the, the swale has not been improved yet. And so a lot of the material that's coming from that pipe and from that drainage is bypassing the actual pipe and leaving the swale, which is likely what was causing the erosion originally that the application was attempting to address. And I think that that's the biggest summary of it. I mean, there's significant erosion to the lake bed from these, these drainage areas. And I know that LMAC will be discussing it, as I said, later this week to hopefully come up with some solutions for drainage improvements around the lake that they can recommend to Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I'm glad we're looking at those pictures that shows what can, might be able to be done, hopefully, to solve it.
Yes, I, I think it'll be, I mean, a large part of it is just nature. These are the, the nature of the storms that we're getting now, this year in particular. And hopefully, we can find some, on the town side, some improvements to the general drainage of, of the area around the lake. So that will likely be an ongoing process. And I'd like to keep everyone in the loop and make sure you have all of the information that I have.
Isabel, do you know who the consultant that they hired? Like, what's that team makeup?
It's TRC. I'm driving, I don't have it in front of me. But it's a major corporation of which the consultant who we went with a year ago has just joined. It consists of a group of limonologists whose expertise are consulting on the lake, in particular for lake water quality and trying to maintain to the best of our ability, lake water quality. It would be a long discussion, but this started in nineteen ninety-eight. We started with the lake consultant way back in nineteen seventy-five. But now we are doing much more, I would say, quantitative and qualitative work to understand the quality of the water, in particular, the amount of phosphorus and nitrogen in the water. Because the lake is starting to, on an annual basis, have annual, have algae blooms. I'll just make one note that of the twenty-four drains that we looked at or inlet areas, those are the major ones around the lake. From our Department of Public Works, there, there likely may be seventy inputs or more into this lake. We're trying historically to figure that out. But these are twenty-four of the major ones. As you can see, Route eighty-seven, Woodland, Erdoney, Lake Road has a huge and obviously Utley Pond coming down from Lake Road. So I hope that answers your question in terms of TRC and their expertise. We're very pleased.
Go ahead, sir.
No, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say we're very pleased with the work that we've had with them over two years.
Yeah, I, I'd just be cautious about when it comes time to the solution that it's not a civil engineer driven solution. Think there's a lot of other professions that are growing in ways to fix or to, to address global warming concerns and situations just like this in non-traditional ways. And if the solution is to put bigger pipes, bigger catch basins, we're just gonna have bigger and bigger problems, so.
Yeah, I, I, I couldn't agree more. And TRC is very much a green environment initiative. They have those types of initiatives and are recommend. We like the scale and, and frankly, to me, this is gonna be a minimum of a decade of work to try to figure out what to do and how to maintain the lake water quality with the increasing phosphorus and nitrogen. It ain't as simple as, as you've just said, putting a, a larger pipe in. Matter of fact, that could harm us. There are a lot of green initiatives away from the lake that we possibly could do. So this will be a whole holistic approach. And obviously, I think should involve wetlands once we get started. And frankly, I think the town is a little frightened by the fact of if we had to replace all these pipes, et cetera, that's a multimillion dollar process that I, I don't, that's good for the town, I don't think it's good for the lake. I think there are other, other approaches we can have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next item is item seven point one. Show cause hearing, order to cease and correct the activity at eighteen Lakeview Park West. You want to give us a summary of that, Isabel?
Yes, so we haven't had any more activity at that location. Everything to this point seems stable. At the previous meeting, I do need an official vote by the commission either to uphold the cease and correct order or to dismiss it or to modify it in some way. Just so that we can officially close things out. And we had a discussion about it, but I think the commission, we ended up getting sidetracked in that discussion and there was no official vote in one way or the other. So I just needed to add it to tonight's agenda to provide everyone with an update, to say there's been no more, no additional activity and to request a vote to close everything out.
Okay, do I hear a motion to close everything out and make sure that the order to season correct?
So uphold and to cease?
What's that?
Uphold and to cease, that's what we're voting on?
Okay.
Uphold and to cease order?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
So moved, very good.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep. Uh, next item is the approval of the minutes. First of all, the regular meeting minutes of January fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I hear a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, very good. All in favor, raise your hand.
Okay.
Aye.
And now the second minutes, second, second item here was the minutes for our site walks. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the three site walks that we want?
I'm going to take that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay.
So moved. Very good. And you did a very nice job on those, Mary Kay, thank you, good job.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Next item is down to the end here. We don't have any audience of citizens, so we don't have to worry. Any open discussion? If anybody has any suggestions for people that you might put on the board, but we're short three people, two alternates and a regular member. So if you have any ideas or people that you think could fill in, let us know. Other than that, is there anything else that anybody wants to add? Okay. Administrative?
Just one this month, so application twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-six. The application of Evan Harbenson at nine lower Woodland Terrace to replace a septic system. Their existing system was failing. And so they are doing a replacement in kind, which is within the review area, the property is, is right on the lake. But there were, from my perspective, no alternative solutions for placement. It's designed with all standard conditions and the, the site is managed so that I, I don't see any concern for runoff to the lake.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Isabel, quick, quick question on that?
Sure.
Being it's on the lake. This was brought to my attention on another property in terms of someone who just renovated on the lake within the last two years. And that there are newer systems that the state of Connecticut now will approve that would be beneficial to if you live near a water body such as a lake. Do we have any input in terms of what they can do? You know, versus just put in the concrete thing and add some sand or whatever it is they do. I'm, I'm no expert, but I'm, I'm just wondering if we are considering newer technology that supposedly is better, that other people on the lake have put in in the last two years?
But yeah, that's a good question and I can definitely speak with the, the sanitarian about it. Generally, I think that, I know that engineered systems can increase in price pretty rapidly. And there are some options to, to move things a little bit further away when the lots do have, have room for it.
Right.
Pump systems and, and things like that. If grading is a challenge with some of these smaller lots that are right on the lake, it's really a placement challenge. But I can touch base with the sanitarian and see if there is differences in design that he either recommends or requires when they're proximal to lakes. And I can also look into what that would ultimately mean for residents if I were to require that, for example, for, for properties that are very close to the lake.
Thank you. I, I, I mean, I think one thing, long-term in that decade project is gonna be, you know, are we, do we have the best septic systems for residents who live on the lake?
Yes, definitely. I, I haven't seen many septic systems fail to the point of impact to the lake. So I, I do think a lot of residents are, at least in that area, are more on top of, of monitoring these. But I, I think that's a good thing to look for going forward and, and I'll talk to Glenn and Eastern Highlands about that to see what my options are as wetlands agent and what residents' options are as well.
Are there restrictions on the, about time to pump them out?
There's no restriction currently.
Pardon me?
As far as for a lake resident or I think one in the town of Columbia, there's no restriction.
Wow, okay, I know they shouldn't.
We were hopeful to do it annually, but that legislation was never passed by the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, okay.
I know that generally. I know that um, generally, I know that other towns have requirements for uh, every five years. Um, and I that that's a requirement that's implemented for any review of um, an addition or a building application that requires health district approval as well. I'm not sure if that's something that Eastern Highland implements. Um, but that's something that I'll discuss with Glenn as well.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. We may come back to you from an LMAC perspective.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know, I I think you would want to take in consideration how many people in a household too, if you make any regulations. Because if you have one or two people in a household, I mean, it's ridiculous to pump out a thousand gallon septic tank every year. Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes or no, John? I I hear you. Uh, I think it's a much bigger issue that isn't a wetlands concern as yet.
Okay, so I guess we're ready for adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion?
All right.
Oh, second.
All right, all in favor, aye.
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 All right, we'll see y'all on the uh, seventeenth.
I'm gonna try. I hope to be
I'll be there.
Yeah, let's hope we don't get any California weather down here.
Oh, my God. Thank you.
Enough of that.
Yes.